Stand for the Cleveland Bakers.
But allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Follow the council meeting to order this taking, uh, first order to move this is roll call.
Dismissed. Steve, right now?
Here.
Right here, please.
Here. Here. Uh, entertaining a motion to approve minutes of our September twenty-second session. So moved.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes from our September twenty-second session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Citizens, you got mess, yeah, no. Uh, unfinished business, we have none. Uh, new business, uh, we have an update from Cindy Schlumberg on the Visitor Center.
I brought some brochures and I don't know if there's any place to like stand them out or anything like that. Um, anyway, I don't know when was the last time or if ever that Visitor Center, um, gave an update here. But, uh, it's about time. I, I go to a lot of other organizations, so, um, anyway, uh, we'll see. I think you guys will be bored by our mission statement. Uh, we are open May through October, May first through October thirty-first. Our hours are Tuesday through Friday, ten to three, and ten to two on Saturday. Um, so we will be closing soon for the year. Um, and the history of the Visitor Center is that it is considered founded by Patty Fizzle in nineteen ninety-three because she proposed the idea that Lake and Year needed a visitor center. Uh, the dedication ceremony then was held May twentieth nineteen ninety-five. So been, been operating there for quite some time. Um, when it was first set up, and this is kind of one of the reasons why I wanted to appear here. Um, it was set up as a membership organization. It is a five oh one C six rather than a five oh one C three. Uh, at that time, you didn't have all these community foundations and all these granting organizations, so they thought that was the best way to set it up, um, to get memberships from local people and businesses. And, uh, support was very good for a long time. We're finding that's very difficult these days. Um, we have a few members. We have some, we have some businesses that give us some support every year. Uh, but that list is dwindling quite a bit from when we had lawyers and accountants and everybody in the downtown area, uh, and supporting us and giving memberships. So, um, that's just kind of the background here. Um, now we are considering seeing if we can change our status to five oh one C three. It's, it's just, there's so many, some brands we can still apply for because we are a nonprofit, but, um, many of them are much more difficult. They must be applied for a C three. So, uh, some of the services that we offer, um, obviously we give visitor info. Um, we have a fully stocked brochure rack that has Lake and Year information, Noble County information, Indiana information. Um, we also have, um, some surrounding counties that we kind of give a little support to. We're in a very unique situation or position, actually, location in Noble County because we're in the corner. A lot of people from La Grange County don't realize they're in Noble County when they stop there. Um, a lot of people from Elkhart County don't realize they're out of Elkhart County if they stop there. So we need to try to support those, those things just a little bit too. Um, or at least know what's going on or where they can go from that information. Uh, we do have a gift shop in-house. We sell souvenirs like postcards. And also, uh, we support local small businesses. A lot of people don't realize that, so I just wanted to highlight that. Um, our vendor items are all locally made in the West Noble area and not necessarily in the town of Lake and Year. But we support and promote pretty much the whole west side of the local area. This is kind of the only entity over here to do that. Uh, we do have the Heritage Station Museum. It is not a radio museum. It hasn't officially been a radio museum since two thousand eight. A lot of people still, a lot of residents don't know that. They stop in and they're like, oh, I didn't know the radios were gone. So, you know, it, it takes a while to convince people. Um, but we love it when people stop in. So, um, we also offer guided tours. So there is no admission for the museum or the Visitor Center. We do take donations. Um, this year is not a very great year for donations. We haven't gotten any, uh, big dollar donations in, in place. But, um, we also do offer guided tours for price. Um, we can offer a mural and historic points of interest tour. Um, I have added garden tours. I did that for, um, one or two groups. Um, personalized cemetery tours. I also have kind of taken it on if somebody says, oh hey, my great grandmother's buried in Oakland Cemetery and, um, I'd love to know where it is, so I'll do the research and I'll take it out. So it's kind of a fun, fun little science, I believe. Um, and I also make presentations to organizations like Crowberry. Um, actually, I was, this year I've only gone to Crowberry, but I do that. Um, our attendance, you might be surprised how many people come to the Visitor Center. Um, back in twenty twenty-two, it was only four hundred and thirteen people. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we hit our highest amount of seven hundred and sixty-one visitors that came from seventeen, at least seventeen states. Not everyone writes what city and state they're from, and four, four countries. So, I realize people are coming. Um, in twenty twenty-five, we are, round them down. Actually, after I said four hundred and thirteen is not very good, we have three hundred and seventy-four right now. Um, it's been slow and I think that it's been, um, that a lot of people are coming from Indiana overwhelmingly from Indiana. So I think people are staying closer to home. I think we're seeing this as a trend in the tourism business right now with the economy and, and, and just uncertainty. So, but we have had visitors from twelve states, two separate groups, or well, one was just a single man from Australia. We had three visitors from Australia just this summer, but they worked together. It was, it was a couple earlier in the summer and then one man was there last week. Um, another main reason, um, that I think it's important that we stay open is our volunteer hours. So our volunteers are retirees. Um, it gets them out of the house. It gets them out in the public. Um, they're interesting. They're interested in people. Um, our volunteer hours as of September thirtieth was five hundred and fifty-eight just this year. Um, and that's a lot lower than normal. Uh, our high in the last four years is in twenty twenty-two, we put in eight hundred and forty-one point five volunteer hours. Now, we did a lot of upgrading. We upgraded to LED lighting, display cases, and we spent a lot more time in there. We did a lot of cleaning. We did a lot of moving things around. So we, we actually did a lot of those volunteer hours before we even opened May first that year. Um, so we do have, we not only provide a service for visitors, we provide a service for retirees to volunteer there. That being said, we desperately need volunteers. Um, some of our people have died or not been able to carry or move or. Um, so it's always needed with anyone who is available during the day. Um, and if we just do a two and a half hour shift. So on a normal day, we do a morning shift and a afternoon shift, ten to twelve thirty, ten to twelve thirty to three. And, um, we try to, we have enough volunteers. You know, that's true, we leave, we do it all the time. Um, but we desperately need volunteers. Um, some of our twenty twenty-five events that we've done this year, as the city hall also does second grade tours. We had a hundred and fifty-four people there for that. Uh, we hosted the Noble County CBP Board meeting, which had ten people. Um, we hosted the Indiana Lincoln Highway Association Spring Gallery, which included fourteen board and other members from the Indiana Lincoln Highway Association. Uh, we hosted new West Noble staff orientation, which was fourteen people. And I also had a Lake and Year Study Club meeting there. And, um, just during our regular open hours, which, uh, since I've kind of become the secretary there, I kind of pushed for us to be open during commercial festival weekend. It seems like a prime time to greet visitors and be an information center. So we had twenty-five visitors over the commercial festival weekend. Um, and they used to only be open, I think, their regular Saturday hours and they were open Sunday or Monday, but we do open for a few hours those two days. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we actually had a lot of visitors, but we did a lot of outreach. Um, the Lincoln Highway Association have their annual conference in Elkhart, and they brought bus tours to Lake and Year. I was able to jump on the bus and get them a tour of Lake and Year. We went all the way down to Kettle House, turned around, came back, saw the last of maybe, I don't know if everybody in the group knows it, but the brick section that's out south of here, um, on Route Three is the very last brick section in the state of the year. Now, there are other brick sections in other states, but that is the last one in the year. And that's on the nineteen thirteen route of the Lincoln Highway. So last year, um, we were able to pump up our numbers by having the conference tours. We also, um, participated in Main Street Lake and Year Truck or Treat event, which we think we served about a hundred kids. And we also opened up for Trick or Treat night, um, something that we haven't done in the past, and I think we're gonna do again. Um, and we had about five hundred and twenty visitors that weekend. So it's always, um, you know, we'd love to make money from these people, but it's always just great to let them know what's in the museum and, you know, make it more comfortable for them to stop in. You know, people say, oh, I know we've got it. I don't know what's in there here. And this way we can show what we have. Um, we do have some additions this year and we've done some minor renovations. We have now a video from the Indiana Lincoln Highway Association, a little, a little fun. It's, it's got some humor in it. It's got a lot of information in it about the Lincoln Highway. And, um, it's like a little video that people watch there. So that's the new addition. We have had new donations. We have some new Crystal Theater memorabilia. We have some commercial artifacts like a master garment uniform and some other advertising specialties from base and other places. Um, and our renovations were the Rotary Impact Club came and painted our external trim around the bottom of the building. It looks very nice. And Main Street Lake and Year came down. Actually, Mayor Frinblin was involved in that. Power washed the building. So, um, and also the, the bricks out in front. So, um, and also Brian and Sherri did a little cleanup of that afterwards. So we really appreciate all that and it looks really nice there. Um, some items that we produce are mural guides and I brought some with me. I brought some Heritage Station Museum brochures, um, which you might have seen around town. I tried to get them out a little bit. And, um, another item that we did recently was the Main Street Historic Home's walking tour. And it tells you what type of house it is, um, the actual year or a circa year. And, um, and if any notable citizens live there. And it runs, it runs like north, what would I say, north of Fifth Street is one side and then south of Fifth Street is the other side. So we've had a lot of people pick those up. Um, and so what I would like to ask, and I don't know, I don't know what the process really is, but I would like to ask personal support of the city. Um, now we are at the end of our year, um, but we do have, we have a, our, we have to have liability insurance. And it's very expensive for us. Now, we do operate out of shoestring. Um, we have like twenty acres of dollars in our treasury right now. Um, that will get completely wiped out by that insurance bill everybody here. So, um, and I, to the best of my knowledge, the city does not support us in any way. Um, I also sit, or maybe I should have introduced myself a little better. I also sit on the county CBP and I know they get, they get money from the county and they also get the, um, the innkeeper's tax. So that's where a great amount of their funding is from. You know, they do also apply for grants and things like that. Um, but we get a small, um, donation from commissioners every year. And as far as I know, the city doesn't really support us in any way. You know, I could, could be wrong, but I mean, we, we have water for six or seven months of the year and we pay for that every month. Um, we don't have garbage pickup, so this is a bit less. Um, I would love it if the city would at least would, could be able to pay our water or, or, you know, just maybe a thousand dollar donation a year would be great. Or not asking for like thousands and thousands of dollars, just anywhere that would come. So, um, our regular memberships, um, a sustaining member is five hundred, a corporate member is two fifty, a contributing member is a hundred, and individual member is twenty-five. So that's just, um, how we've had it set up for quite a while. We wanted to change that and I believe we couldn't as our bylaws have written that up. So, um, you know, it's a situation where we might need to change the bylaws, but anyway, I guess that's. Do I ask if anybody has other questions?
Arthur, we have some votes.
I think we could, you see the votes and we probably have a thousand votes.
So we have a wish to offer a thousand dollars of support. I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded that, uh, we give a thousand dollars of support to our Visitor Center. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. I hope that anyone's ever come since I've been here. Well, and usually we, uh, usually I do go out to different places.
And I think we find some places, we've got a little, hey, well, if you want to leave them.
Yeah, and I think we have some of these, but I, I brought Indiana. I brought enough for everybody in the room. I think probably none of these. I brought Indiana Festival guys. I know that Grace and I are gonna be here in two weeks talking about the county CBP. And, um, but these are just things that we have on hand all the time. So these Indiana Festival guys are great. They're the guys to all festivals in the state. And even often they should give the dates for next year. If you missed one, and you're like, oh, that's, that sounds really cool. I'd like to go to that. Usually they give you the date. We have our, um, trifle about the Heritage Station Museum. Sure, they're in out here. I keep getting, every time I come to pay my water bill, oh, I need to bring some.
How many of those up here? There may be some downstairs.
And, and here's just a mural guide. So, um, this has the thirty, it's like thirty-four listed on it. Um, oddly enough, the last one is the one on the wall at the Visitor Center and it's not over here. But, um, they, it's pretty uptight. Thank you very much. Should I?
Those of you that don't know, Cindy does an outstanding, uh, promoting the Visitor Center, uh, getting word out and actually promoting the whole town, uh, any activity going on. Uh, we really appreciate those, uh, yes. Yeah, really with the bills down there being on the board, uh, trying to deal with insurance and, uh, that kind of thing. It was a struggle last year. Pretty much got a die-down. We fought this bad issue, but.
We have weird, that's what we're looking out for this year, but we'll be a lesser of it.
Thank you, Gibson.
You're welcome.
Uh, next up, we got a resolution ten thirteen twenty twenty-five transfer of funds. I think, uh, you said you didn't.
Yeah, um, when the auditors were here, um, the, the one auditor said that she, um, it was her understanding that anything from the MBH restricted is not supposed to be transferred to a grant fund. We're supposed to get it directly. So we were gonna reverse the term, I mean, really earlier this year. But I got the State Board September, um, Cities and Towns Bulletin. And it's states specifically in there that we are supposed to be in grant funds. So I'd like to just take one, I email her today, but I have a, uh, maybe that I'd like to table a clarification.
I'll make a motion, uh, table a resolution ten thirteen. Second that.
It's twenty-five, yeah, I'm sorry.
That moved and seconded that, uh, we tabled the resolution ten thirteen twenty twenty-five to transfer the funds. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have the, uh, the GILBON timetable, introduction of the GILBON ordinance ten twenty-nine twenty twenty-five.
The timetable spells out, um, the whole process for everything. So tonight, what, um, they invite us to do is just pass the, or the GILBON ordinance and the additional appropriation ordinance on the first reading because it has to go through, um, this whole, or has to go through public hearings and other steps before we can move on. But it's just inducing it in.
Should we move on each one?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance ten twenty-nine twenty twenty-five.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded that, uh, we, uh, passed the introduction of the GILBON ordinance ten twenty-nine twenty twenty-five on the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Entertaining motion to, uh, for the introduction of the GILBON directional appropriations, ten thirty twenty twenty-five. I'll make that motion as well.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we passed, uh, bond appropriations number ten thirty twenty twenty-five on the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Uh, next up, we have our claims register. Also, do you approve the claim register? Second. It's been moved and seconded that we take care of our claim register. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Yeah, yeah.
You heard a couple of things.
Brian. Um. On the Visitor Center, uh, we as a city can request innkeeper's tax fund from county if we put in a request to help support the Visitor Center. And some might say, well, you don't have any hotels or bed and breakfasts. Well, no, we don't, but we've never asked for it. And we used to have a hotel. We used to have that in breakfast that we would generate an innkeeper's tax. So that's.
We do have two airbnbs.
Okay, all right. So, um, state statute does allow municipalities to request from the county. It's a county level tax that each community can pull from that if requesting. So just to keep that. I think it would just be a request either commissioners or the, the county council. Uh, I'm not sure what one of the commissioners like that.
And he, if you get that, then we distribute that or they can get that direct.
Uh, no, the county collects it and then they transfer it.
They distribute it to you.
Not to her, but to the county visitor bureau.
The counties.
And then you don't get any part of that.
We don't get it.
I think we should. Uh, our softball games, those were, uh, last week and, and this weekend. Uh, if there's any more requests of young firefighters, you deny them because they're getting young enough. It was a one-run softball game this year. So, um, it was, it was a, a lot of fun. And we, uh, did take in a lot of food for the food pantry, um, a week ago last Saturday. And then this Sunday, we played the Carlex team that's in the league in, in Warsaw. Police, fire departments both combined and, uh, played them. And we sent them home with their wounds, uh, twenty to five. Uh, so we did all right. And that fundraiser that day was for the humane shelter, uh, of Noble County.
You probably liked having those young firemen on that team.
Yeah, a little bit. Um. We did that for the humane shelter because they helped us with the case, uh, down on Smith Street where they took in all those animals. And they're continuing to have puppies. Uh, so twenty-seven grew to like, I don't know, maybe forty-some dogs. So we did a, uh, fundraising thing for them. It was kind of cool. Uh, they brought their van and they were selling T-shirts for a fundraiser thing. We had a, had to drive the van right out onto the field and we took a picture, a home plate, both teams. And it was, it was a fun day yesterday to be able to do that for them. Um, and then of course, we had our, our last public safety day at Bashan Farm. Uh, it was very nice to see all the city departments that were represented. Um, I think it was a great showing and, uh, we obviously appreciate everything they have done um, over the last fifty-seven, whatever it is, years, uh, fifty-three years. It was a, it was a pretty day. And I will say that, um, my wife and I had an opportunity to, to attend John Lott's funeral. Um, it was a wonderful, beautiful tribute, uh, to John and his family. Um, it was very fitting. And, you know, he, we think we realize what people do. Um, and then when they're gone and people talk about what they've done for them, um, there's a whole lot more meaning to it. And, uh, I just want to say it was, it was very well done. And, you know, to start the service, um, if you don't know, Brandon Staudt, that was his grandfather. And Brandon planned everything out, A through Z perfectly. And the first thing they did at the service was, um, we were, they were required to national land. And they couldn't get a tour. And, uh, so we sang it. And in that little church of the Nazarene with all those people in there, there was standing room only for, for John's service. It gives, it gives me chills now talking about it. It literally gave us chills. And, and they said that John wouldn't want it any, any way more than that because he loved them. He was saying this church. So I guess that all looked out for a reason. It was, it was very, very meaningful. So that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Jeremy. So, um, this week, or last week was Fire Prevention Week. So to let you guys know, last week we spent time at the elementary in the primary. Um, today we spent all day up at the primary. Uh, we take all of the kindergarten kids through their smart, smokehouse. Uh, so they're kind of aware of what to do and, um, actually get to see how to handle different things and some different emergencies that they might see at home. Uh, so we did that and then we have more fire prevention this week than we're doing, um, tomorrow. And, uh, so hopefully we get some of the Amish schools that'll contact us. Usually they'll contact us to come up there, but we're busy doing fire prevention on top of all of our other stuff. So today we left Sean up there by himself. So he was trying to run the smokehouse and talk to the kids for a little bit till we got back. That's it.
Thank you, Jeremy. It's important to get these kids trained. Regardless how small they are, they remember some of this stuff. No, though, like my kids, we're, they're my mom and dad's, like, so they forget about it. So. Brian.
I have a quick update on the Finn and Brown and Baby Program this year. They were moving right along with the head of fall accounting in two weeks. So they're supposed to be back next year, get that stuff. Uh, get a chance, drive by the clock at night. We went through and switched all the bulbs over to LED lights to get light bulbs for them. They don't make them in so long. You can't tell the lights are. Lit up pretty bright. That's what it is.
I think what the schedule now for Finn and Brown will be about mid-November.
Uh, they said it'd be three weeks, yeah. So it'll be first, fourth of November.
John. Um, we're busy winterizing everything this week. Um, the bathrooms will all be closed by the end of the week except for the old fire station. Those have eaten out. So those will stay open. And I'm hoping by next year, next fall, Pettit Park will be a year-round bathroom. I've done some investigation. I've done some investigations, and I think for, uh, a little bit of money, I can turn that into a year-round bathroom also, especially since the transmemorial's there, that would help us a lot. Um, it looks like our trails are gonna get in next year, and I'm looking at a new gazebo for Gazebo Park. And, uh, talking with Mayor and, uh, Brian and stuff, getting some ideas, we might do more than that down there also. So, I'm excited for next year's project, so, that's where we're going.
Thank you, John. Jeff.
Other.
Elroy.
I'm not in.
Ben.
I'm not in.
Matthew. Brian. David.
So, I think all the park heads coming out to Basham Farm on Saturday, really good to see that turnout, uh, a lot of kids just have a fun night to be out there, so, it was cool to see everybody out there. Oh, yeah.
Robert.
Robert, I do have one other thing, uh, sorry. I talked about visitor center, and I forgot what it is. Uh, Friday, um, one of my goals as chief was to be able to take my whole command staff to an international police chiefs conference this year, it's in Denver. Uh, but I want the city to know that, um, the biggest expense for that trip is COBEL, obviously. Um, so I did some begging, uh, over the last year, and the, the state foundation, the police chiefs foundation always pays for mine, so we don't have that cost. Um, Mike Crossley, um, started going about four years ago as assistant chief, I start taking him. We do pay for his room, uh, but Brandon Stoudt, patrol sergeant, Jason Shear, the detective sergeant, um, they're both gonna get to go this year, uh, Jim Mowring, prosecutor in Noble County, uh, said he funded the registration fee and air for, or, uh, hotel for those two guys. Uh, so, we get four for one, uh, basically, to be able to go to that conference this year. And, uh, we all four are flying out of Indianapolis to Denver, uh, round trip, the four of us, for eight hundred and seventy dollars. So, um, we got up early and, uh, saved a, saved a lot of money, so, like I said, basically, the four guys are going for the, for the cost of one guy, so, I'm really excited about for them to get to experience that. Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, also, Wednesday night at six PM at the primary school, the police and fire department will be doing their bike, uh, giveaway cycles for the cities with Dan and Lee Dockage, um, that is at six PM at the primary. If you've never came, take a half hour and come. It is an unbelievable evening that these kids who've never, some of them have never owned a bike before, will get the opportunity to, to have a custom fit bike, um, that were chosen by teachers and our school resource officers. And this will be the fourth year, so this will be our eightieth bike that we've given away to our community. Um, it's just a, just a really, really fun, quick half hour, we give it to them and tell them to take them on, right, and they get a customized bicycle, they get a helmet, and a bike lock, uh, for their bikes, and, uh, so, it's a fun, fun time, so. Um, Friday night, seventeen, Milford Food Bank is giving another food giveaway at the primary school in the horseshoe from five to seven. Uh, folks will line up on Grand Street and then come around on Union and go through the horseshoe, and, um, we'll have guys to direct them. Um, got a lot going on, but it's all community-based, and, um, that's what it's about, so, I think that's it. Thank you, Brian. Yeah.
So, anything else, Paul?
Well, I think.
Robert. Uh, didn't attend the BCA meeting tonight, uh, had a request, uh, for business on, uh, nine oh one Lincoln Way West, uh, for use, evidence for use, uh, horseshoe. Uh, we denied it, uh, simply because, uh, nothing has been, we've given them the opportunity to correct it before this meeting, and nothing's been corrected yet, and, uh, they didn't show for the meeting, the owner of the building did, but the guys actually doing the work did not. So, we'll talk to them, and we'll give them a little time to get things straightened up. Uh, if that doesn't work, then we'll move on to something else. So, it's unfortunate, we have to do that at times, but we can't, but things get out of control, and it's right across the street from the park, and you have neighbors up there, uh, let's get it cleaned up, so, uh, it's, we stimulate other, well, business owners to clean up their business. Well, uh, and Mr. Venetia was, the other night, got a facade grant to, uh, fix up his building, like, you know, that, uh, we, we hope to see that move right on down the street, uh, one building gets fixed, rest of them might get fixed, so. Uh, so much for that, so, uh, next week, uh, we have the, uh, AM Mayor's Conference, and, uh, uh, Brian and I will be attending that along with our engineering group from Fort Wayne, Bandon Park, and Julia, uh, maybe down there. Uh, right now, uh, not throw a monkey wrench into that, but my sister's not doing very well, so, uh, hopefully, that does enter the plans to, to take care of that. Be an interesting conference this year with all the, uh, bills, uh, in front of the Senate, uh, and especially SB one, and, uh, really, well, there's several more, that comes down to a county level and city level, and, uh, where we get our funds, and, uh, uh, from the county, uh, down to the city, uh, the, uh, one fund that they're already massaging, it's the OAT monies, and they may keep it roughly the same until twenty thirty one, possibly, that's what they're trying to do. And so, uh, that really means a lot, and, uh, the, uh, uh, group of mayors and lobbyists for us, the AM group, uh, you don't realize how much power, uh, that generates in, in the Senate on a state level, that to let, let them know every community in the state of Indiana, and how they'll be affected by, uh, all this transition. So, uh, hopefully, they continue to massage its bill a little bit, and, uh, it was pretty harsh to start with, and, uh, hopefully, they can back off of it. Uh, that's about all I have this evening, entertaining a vote for adjournment, so, this. Been moved in a seconded that we adjourned, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.